I'd like to call the meeting of the City Council Public Financing Authority to order. City Clerk, may I have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mosher.
Present.
Councilmember Bolton.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns.
Here.
Mayor Vandermark.
Here.
Councilmember Strickland.
Here.
Councilmember McKeon.
Here.
Councilmember Kelmec.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Tonight, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Brian Bran, our IT technician.
Please stand if you're able to. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Joe Peddic from Calvary Chapel of the Harbor.
Test 1-2, we good? Awesome, let's pray. Lord God, we just, Lord, we thank you for this meeting. And Lord, we thank you that we can come before your very throne of grace. And so, Lord, we thank you for tonight. We thank you for the seven that are here, Lord God. We thank you for the new ones that are coming in. And Lord, we pray according to your word, Lord. You said in your word, you said, "When the righteous are in authority, the people rejoice." And Lord, we thank you that there is a lot of rejoicing going on in this room, a lot of rejoicing going on in the overflow. And Lord, we pray that we would rejoice always. So we lift up these seven, Lord God. We lift up the new mayor coming in. And we pray, Lord, for your choice, your perfect choice, for the new mayor coming in. And Lord, you said wisdom comes from above. So, Lord, we pray that, Lord, there would be that wonderful wisdom from above. And we pray, Lord God, that those that govern over this city, according to your word, you said that those that govern, govern for things that are good and not evil. Oh, Lord, we pray that, Lord, these next few years would be things that are good and not evil. We pray, Lord God, that you would put it on the hearts of those, Lord, the new ones that are coming in, the plan and the purpose that you have for Huntington Beach. And Lord, we thank you for this wonderful city. We thank you for our police department. We thank you for our fire department. We thank you, Lord, for those here in this room, Lord God. And we pray a special blessing over each and every one of them. Lord, we pray according to your word, Lord. And we, as the people here, we want to pray over our city council. And Lord, we pray according to Numbers Chapter 6, that the Lord, that you would bless them, that you would keep them, that you would cause your face to shine upon them. And Lord, that you would be gracious to them and that you would continually give them your peace. Lord God, thank you for every good and perfect gift comes from you, from above. So we lift up this council to you. We lift up this meeting to you. We ask that you would rule and reign. We ask that you would, Lord, you would raise up our next mayor. You, Lord God, would raise up the next Mayor Pro Tem. And Lord, your hand would continue to be upon this great city that we live in, in Huntington Beach. In Jesus' name we pray, and all God's people said?
Amen!
Amen! God bless you guys. God bless you.
Moving on to announcement of supplemental communications. City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, we do. We received an email communication regarding item number one on our agenda, our invocation. And I just received at 5:43 our Exhibit A to our election resolution for tonight. The numbers that I will present later, for the voting numbers, in my PowerPoint reflect the same numbers that are in this certificate, so I'm very happy right now. And that'll be part of our record tomorrow.
Thank you. Public comments, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
We have 23 signed to speak.
Okay, due to this being a ceremonial meeting, we will give every speaker one minute. Proper decorum at city council meetings is imperative in order for the public to remain informed about issues pertaining to city business. The public comments portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to be heard and address those issues in a public forum. Disruptive behavior impeding or delaying our ability to conduct the council's business will not be tolerated. California Penal Code Section 403 prohibits disrupting this meeting and enforcement action will be taken for violations of this law. At this time, the city council will receive comments from members of the public regarding any topic, including items on the open session agenda. Individuals wishing to provide comments may do so in person by filling out a request to speak form delivered to the city clerk. All speakers are encouraged but not required to identify themselves by name. Each speaker may have up to three minutes unless the volume of speakers warrants reducing the time allowance. Please note that the Brown Act does not allow discussions or actions on topics that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to speak directly with a council member on an item not on the agenda may consider scheduling an appointment by contacting the city county's administrative assistant at 714-536-5553, or emailing the entire citycouncil@city.council@surfcity-hb.org. Could you please call up the first-hand speakers?
Yes, first-hand speakers, and please come down to both podiums. Thelma England, Pat Goodman, Rick Brown, Steve Barnes, Canan Durham, Amory Hanson, Laslow Lack, Ken Inoue, Guest P, Katie Swales.
First speaker, go ahead.
Greetings, Honorable Mayor, council members, city staff, and citizens of Huntington Beach. Congratulations to our newly elected. To all who were candidates, there were many that spoke up, but you were the few that stepped up. Whether elected or not, you mounted the courage and vulnerability that others could or would not. And to the residents of Huntington Beach, many of you exercised one of society's most important liberties, the electoral process. Thank you and congrats to all that voted. Regardless of your candidate selection, you had an impact by ensuring that your voice was heard. Finally, a most sincere congratulations to my darling wife, Lisa Lane Barnes, our new city clerk. Your enduring character and commitment to continuing to serve our community won the hearts and respect of many. I and your family, friends, and supporters are extremely proud of your accomplishment.
Thank you.
Well done.
Next speaker, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Katie Swales and my mother is Robin Estenislaw. My family and I are here tonight to acknowledge the 26 years that she has dedicated to the city of Huntington Beach. I don't know if you've seen her resume, but it's impressive. And in preparing for her retirement, I reached out to her coworkers and peers, those that know her best, and here's what they had to say about my mom. Robin's leadership has always been rooted in a strong ethical foundation, unwavering honesty and fairness. She is a voice of reason here at City Hall. Robin fosters a work environment that is considerate, respectful, and welcoming. She guides her team with moral principles and transparency, and she loves the people that she works with, and they love her in return.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas to all of you and God bless.
Next speaker, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Ryan. I'm the owner of Sugar the Surfing Dog. I just wanted to say, I came up here like four months ago, and I just brought Sugar up here and played a video. And basically, like after that, I just felt really loved by the city. They gave Sugar a float for the Fourth of July. And Sugar's 14, and she's being inducted into the Servers Hall of Fame on Thursday in front of Honey Conservants' Board. And this is a dream come true, so I just wanted to say thank you to Casey, Pat Burns, and Gracie, and everybody from the city of Huntington Beach and Honey Conservants' Board, so.
Thank you. Next speaker, go ahead.
Yes, hi. My name is Laslow Lack, and I just wanted to say how proud I am of this board and the new members coming into it. I want to say thank you for the job that you did, the perseverance that you showed, the dedication to going through the election and going through all the things that you went through. The Bible says that righteousness exalts a nation, and sin is a reproach any people, and right, we see it exalted. And there are more cities that want to become like this one. Vince Lombardi said, Vince Lombardi said, "If it doesn't matter whether you win or lose, but just how you play the game, then why do we keep score?" It does matter if you win or lose, and it does keep score, and it's 7-0. And we're happy to see that. I want to say thank you. God bless you all, and we don't stop praying for you every day. Thank you, guys, for your job.
Thank you.
Mayor Vandermark, city council members. I want to thank council members Rhonda Bolton, Dan Kelmec, and Natalie Mosher for their four years of service to the city and during some really challenging times. I want to especially thank you for the way that you came prepared for the meetings and were able to ask questions that would guide the council to better decisions. And enlightened, in the meantime, it enlightened us who are hearing the discussion on agenda items. We always learn something. I appreciated and valued your experiences as educated professionals and that you engaged in the community through nonprofits and serving on boards and commissions. I do wish you well and know that there is something great ahead for you. I also want to welcome the newly elected city council members Chad Williams, Butch Twining, Don Kennedy, and City Clerk Lisa Barnes, and Returning Treasurer Lisa Backstrom. I wish you all well and hope that this period of orientation and transition goes smoothly.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Mr. Amory Hanson. I would like to thank the mayors for their service and perseverance during the last year. The mayor's resilience is an example to many. I would also like to express my support for Councilman McKeon to be Mayor Pro Tempore, and for Councilman Burns to be the 87th mayor of Huntington Beach. Mr. Plato once said, quote, "Great leaders do not seek power, they have power thrust upon them." I believe Councilman Burns will demonstrate this. I would also like to congratulate the free new councilmen and new clerk. Hopefully, the new council's membership will consider supporting Mr. Amory Hanson a historic choice. The historic comeback has just begun. I look forward to working with our new mayor and all of the councilmen in this new era. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
TJ England, I'm here to thank Natalie Mosher and Dan Kelmec and Rhonda Bolton. I know it's been probably a much harder and more difficult job and more time-consuming job than any of us could imagine, the four years you've put in here. But we're so proud of you and so thankful, and I hope that we see you in the future in other political jobs. To the three newcomers, I hope you're as half as able to serve our city as they have. I hope you plan to represent all 19,000 of us, not just your church and your neighborhood. May the good Lord bless and guide you as you serve all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Kenny Inoue. As this new city council begins its current term, you will face unprecedented financial challenges which must be addressed in a responsible and timely manner. Since one of the main primary responsibilities of the city council is to maintain the financial health of the city, and since many of us would like to know how the city will pay for the operating deficit and the monthly debt payments that will be required when we borrow money, I would request that the city council prepare on a semi-annual basis a report on how these future payments will be made. During these challenging times, the people of Huntington Beach need to know how their quality of life will be affected by the financial decisions made by the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
I'm speaking on behalf of Pride of the Pier to acknowledge the swearing-in of Chad Williams, Butch Twining, and Don Kennedy. I'd also like to acknowledge their history of anti-LGBTQ sentiments, such as calling the queer community an abomination, equating pedophiles with queer people, and suggesting that HB youth are being indoctrinated by the LGBTQ community. They also held a campaign event at local restaurant Basilico's, which has used its social media to call for violence and, quote, "re-education camps" for progressive voters. Don referred to Basilico's owner as, quote, "a true patriot." These sentiments and many more have prompted worry from the members of this community. We hope we are proven wrong, but we will be here to press for accountability from our leadership in the meantime. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, Mayor Gracie Vandermark and soon-to-be Mayor Pat Burns. Tonight is a culmination of a lot of teamwork, tireless dedication to make Huntington Beach the best city of its size in America. God has certainly blessed Huntington Beach. The voters have spoken with historic and resounding outcome, not only supporting the tremendous work of the Fab Four, but also realizing the talent and skill sets of the HB3 members, Chad Williams, Butch Twining, and Don Kennedy. I've had the distinct, I've had the distinct honor and privilege of having a front-row seat watching the never-ending grind of a daily campaign event, and I can tell everyone, their collective worth ethic and love for Huntington Beach could not be greater than what the HB3 team exhibited for the last 15 months. Their commitment to understand the macro issues and the priorities facing the city of Huntington Beach is unsurpassed and will ultimately serve all residents in Huntington Beach in a very productive manner. Again, congratulations to our newly elected city officials, Chad Williams, Butch Twining, and Don Kennedy, our new city clerk, Lisa Barnes. And also, this is a reminder that when you're campaigning against the Pacific Air Show, it's a losing proposition.
Next speaker?
Hello, my name is Renee Dotty. I know tonight is the night of recognition, and I thank all the council members that are leaving today, and I'm very welcoming to the new council members coming in. I'm a businesswoman that's lived, started living in Huntington Beach in 2003, and it's a very exciting time because Huntington Beach is an iconic, worldwide, iconic city. And what we need to start doing is elevating this city to make the world remember that this is not just Surf City, this is a dedicated city to fair government where the people are heard and everybody gets a voice here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, I'll call the next group. Last call for Guest P, Buffy Chanel, Don McGee, Ellen Riley, Libby, Christopher Reeny, Urson Russell, Melvin Sterling, David Reinerson, Chris Byrne, Perry Clitheroe.
First speaker, please walk up to the podium. Go ahead.
This is a historical day for Huntington Beach. For the past maybe 12 months, I've seen the work ethic of Butch Twining, Don Kennedy, and Chad Williams. And I believe that God's providence right now is shining on this city. This is the shining city in a hill. I'm so proud of this city, and I'm so proud that this hails the end of a rampant, socialistic, sexually deviant time that has destroyed the country that I'm from. And I want this city to be that example to the rest of this nation. Everybody's watching. Everybody's watching Huntington Beach, and I'm so proud to be a citizen of this great city. Thank you so much, Pat, Gracie, Tony, Casey, and the HB3.
Thank you. Next speaker?
David Reinerson. I want to thank Natalie, Dan, Rhonda, and Robin for their service to our city, for showing up to council meetings prepared, for listening to public comments from all sides, and for doing their best to put the needs of our city first. You will all be missed. To the incoming council members, I issue this challenge. Remember that you are representing all the citizens of Huntington Beach, not just those who voted for you. Be as prepared, as open, and as solution-oriented as your predecessors. Many people treat politics and life as a zero-sum game. Everything you win is something I lose. It does not have to be that way. It does not cost me anything to treat others with respect, and just because I don't want to read a book, it costs me nothing to allow those who do want to read it to do so. It's time to get back to doing the city's critical business and refrain from trying to impose personal agendas on the entire population. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, Huntington Beach homeowner and voter since 1985. I want to welcome the newly elected Huntington Beach council members. Please know that thousands of Huntington Beach citizens will be watching your votes and any agenda items you propose. Many of us are ready to raise public awareness of any actions taken that will impact our city finances or services. You see, campaign promises matter something to the voters in the city, and now more than ever, thousands in Huntington are aware that city council actions matter. I wish you the best going forward. I would also like to thank our outgoing council members for their efforts to make Huntington Beach an inclusive place for all who live, work, and play here.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, Chris Reeny, native resident. In the months I've attended city council meetings, I've been struck by the anger of them. Speakers lambasted council members, accused audience members of immoral acts, council members turned on each other, and righteous in the nation was silenced by statements of, quote, "We demand respect." Leaders know that the behavior they model are the ones that will be followed. We follow what you do, not what you say. A lot of council members ignored this, but some members were better. They modeled respect. They came correct. They met with constituents on the ground. They listened to us. They showed patriotism through democracy and we, the people, all the people. While others tore down, they built up. They avoided identity politics and spoke the truth. And you will know the truth, and the truth will set you free. John 8:32. Council members Mosher, Bolton, and Kelmec, thank you so much for your service. We are better for knowing you. If your replacements are half as good as you, we have nothing to fear. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, council. I wanted to start by thanking the three of you for your public service, and also Robin for two and a half decades of service to Huntington Beach. Thank you very, very much. I'd like to welcome the new city councilors. You've been chosen by the people of Huntington Beach to serve us. We have a budget deficit, and I know somebody said earlier that we are one of the best cities in the world, and I think I agree, but we are also the most expensive mid-sized city in America, so I hope that there's some consideration put towards that as well. Solving that will help solve our deficit, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hello, Huntington Beach, Urson Russell. So great to see you all here tonight. It's nice to see the three of you that will be finding some of their job opportunity as you work your way out towards an early retirement, so we all appreciate that. I couldn't be prouder to be a part of this community and these group of people that work so hard to bring some more common sense back to this local government and to show Orange County what it's like to go and fight for their constituents and tell the state where they need to keep their business. So God bless this city. God bless this council, the new members coming in, and the city clerk. I love this city. It's amazing, and I can't wait to be more of a part of it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hello, my name's Chris. Just want to say thanks, Gracie, for serving our city with such class and dignity and style as mayor, and for, thank you, Michael Gates, for orchestrating not only the four, but seven. Man, that is amazing, and nobody else did as much as you did to make that happen. Thanks. And also, I can't imagine how the three coming in are going to be half as good as the three leaving, but also like to thank Dan for his service as mayor. Oh, wait. Thanks.
Next speaker?
I want to thank council members Mosher, Bolton, Kelmec, and City Clerk Estenislaw. Your steadfast dedication and professionalism have been truly appreciated. The programs that you put in place during your term have made marked difference in the community, as has been noted by things such as reduced homelessness and an efficient city clerk's office. We've seen a stark difference between council members that came to the dais well-prepared and those that complained about how much reading was required to do their job. It was always a pleasure to hear from council members that had questions and discussion points ready. We know that the best policy is not one that is rubber-stamped, but one that is challenged, critiqued, and modified. We can only hope that the incoming council members will be working to ask, willing to ask questions before voting and lockstep with their compatriots. But I want to make sure the public understands the dismissal of the voter ID lawsuit. The city didn't win anything. No one, the judge ruled that the case isn't ripe yet. No one has been harmed. For example, you could write a law against people wearing blue shirts in HB, but until someone is arrested for wearing a blue shirt, no one has been harmed, and the court won't take the time to hear the merits.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Gracie Vandermark, Pro Tem, Pat Burns, and all the city council members here tonight. We are, I'm Justine Makeoff. I'm here on behalf of Free Rain Foundation at the Huntington Central Park Equestrian Center, and I'm here to thank you for all your service and dedication that you give to the city. Everybody has said many times that this is an amazing, wonderful, incredible city, and it is, and it really takes so many amazing minds working together, so thank you. I also want to let everybody know that we have an upcoming event at Free Rain Foundation this Saturday. It's 11 to 2. It's a free community event, open to the community. They can come learn about horses. It's to celebrate the Day of the Horse, which is a national holiday in our country, and everything we have today really was founded on the back of a horse. You can learn all about that if you come to the Huntington Central Park Equestrian Center. We will have vendors selling holiday wares and Santa, so I hope families will come and celebrate with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening. My name is Melvin Sterling. I'm a, I came to Huntington Beach when I graduated from medical school half a century ago. I couldn't have picked a better place to live. Our children grew up here. We have a grandchild living with us at this time. What was so good about Huntington Beach that my wife and I decided this was the place for us? We looked around. We saw the neighbors, the neighborhood. We saw the neighbors, the neighborhood. We went to the library and took our then very young children to the library.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Ellen Riley, and I do want to speak about our world-famous, or nationally-famous, public library, Central Library of Huntington Beach. And I want to ask the council if they could please revise or put out a message of kindness and care regarding the personnel of Huntington, of the library, because the message got distorted, that there was pedophile, yes, there may be pedophile books there, but the distorted message was that the library workers were all pedophiles. So they've been called that. Many of them have been. And that led to our current wonderful librarian Jessica Franz and resign, resign and go elsewhere. So if you could put out a message that when you're talking about possible pedophile or sexual books in the library, you could put, you weren't referring to staff who worked there. I would, that would just be a great message at this time, or anytime. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Last call for Buffy Chanel, and the next two, Tim Geddis and Tori Johnson.
If you're here and would like to speak, please step up to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tim Geddis here. While most city council installations of new members feature welcomes and best wishes, my welcoming comes with a warning and a dire prediction. It may be said, "To the victor go the spoils," but that is profoundly selfish, anti-democratic, and reckless sentiment, and one that does not serve the citizenry being represented. If the incoming council members merely intend to promote the policies and preferences of the current city council majority without seeking wider and more constructive interaction with the greater community, then my prediction of continued civic strife is dire indeed. We will see no progress in solving our problems, addressing our needs, or building our future. I urge the incoming new council members to be constructive and not destabilizing in their government. And thank you, Robin.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Yeah. Hi, my name's Tori Johnson, leader and founder of Black Lives Matter Huntington Beach. I want to thank Natalie, Rhonda, Dan, and Robin for all of your service to the city over the past few years, for your sacrifice, for your love and compassion towards the people, for listening, for understanding, and for caring. If going forward, the goal is equality and compassion for all people, we're off to a bad start. We have a lady in here heckling right now. You know, I just heard my friend get called a ladyboy. I just heard a whole lot of stuff in this other room, and there's no one holding them accountable. So, it's super sad. I hope moving forward that you guys do not continue to make terrible headlines, and I just hope that we can have a beautiful and safe Huntington Beach and not create an atmosphere of hate. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comments.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to council committee appointments. Council members, do you have any committee appointments to announce? AB 1234 reporting, does anyone have anything to report? Openness and negotiation disclosures, does anyone have anything to report? City managers report, city manager, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor, nothing tonight.
Okay, moving on to awards and presentations. And we'd actually like to start with the Mayor's HB Excellence Award. It's not, okay, it's on. So when I was told that I needed to select someone for my Mayor's Excellence Award, I immediately knew who this was. This was a person who stepped up to help us through this difficult transition. As many of you know, we have a very strong council with very different personalities. And this person found a way to deal with each and every single one of us with professionalism and grace that aren't matched. So I'd like to call up Chief Eric Parra. Present him. Chief, you did an amazing job. I'm sure you didn't know part of your job was going to be to babysit us when we couldn't get our situations together, so thank you so much. I cannot tell you how thankful I am, and I will always be. Do you want to say anything?
No.
Do you guys want to come take a picture with the chief? Come on. You're welcome to, if you'd like to also. He really didn't know. You know how hard it is to keep something secret from this man? Travis. Michael. Thank you, chief. So I guess this is the part where I get to talk. It's my least favorite part of being in office, public speeches. I never prepare anything. I think it's better when it comes from the heart. I just want to thank each and every single one of you guys who helped, not just support me while I was mayor, but actually went out there, knocked on doors, talked to your friends, neighbors, rain, shine, blood, sweat, tears, to help me be where I am. Thank you for allowing me to represent you guys. I was as frustrated as you were, and it's been very rewarding to be able to make a difference. So thank you all for allowing me to be here. So, next, we have a presentation of gifts. I'd like to call out Kathy Fikes, if she's still here. Kathy, here? Let me make sure she's here. Is she in the back? Like, no more. Here it comes. Kathy, thank you so much for all the work you've done for us, to help us. You got us everywhere on time. You made sure we didn't forget any appointments. You made our jobs possible and much easier, so thank you again. Next, council member. Gifts. Alyssa, our wonderful city treasure. So these are awards, this is a gift from the outgoing council to the current electeds, reflective of what my era as mayor was like, and to thank everyone for their efforts. Excuse your wrapping, it's the best I can do. Robin Estenislau, outgoing city clerk. Our city attorney, Michael Gates. I promise, it's not just newspaper. Dan Kelmick. Council member Casey McKeon. Council member Tony Strickland. Our almost mayor, Pat Burns. He will. Rhonda Bolton. Natalie Moser. I would now like to call up our wonderful city clerk, Robin Estenislau. So Robin has been our city clerk for over 20 years, putting our agendas together, our scripts, our mayor scripts together. I just want to congratulate you on retiring and hope that you have a wonderful time with your time off. So, thank you. So at this time, it's been reserved for special presentations for outgoing and newly-elected officials. City clerk, do we have anyone who would like to make a special presentation?
I don't have anyone that's signed up specifically, but, yes, and I've been waiting for Janet. So is she here? Oh, good. Janet Wenness here. Come on in, Janet.
Welcome, Senator. Okay, we're now moving on to comments by current and outgoing elected officials. Each council member will have an opportunity for comments. Would anyone like to begin? Council member Kelmick.
First, I wanted to say thank you to the residents of Huntington Beach for allowing me to serve this community for the last two decades. I'd also like to thank my family, who sacrificed two Tuesdays a month for 12 years, and some Wednesday mornings, too. The endless phone calls during bath time or dinnertime, the late night preparing for meetings, the social media blackouts imposed on them so that my wife didn't get arrested, and for seeing some of the absolute horrible things people say when they're sitting behind their keyboards, and some of the things that are actually said in this room. But it's what you sign up for when you choose to serve. It shouldn't be, but it is. And you're not here for yourself, you're here in spite of yourself. So when I first moved to Huntington Beach from Seal Beach nearly 20 years ago, I'd never considered that I'd be up here helping to lead this great city. What I've learned, the experiences I've had, and my own personal growth from being 24 when I started to being 42 now, have definitely had an impact on how I approach things. My favorite part of this job has been constituent services, getting stop signs put in, fixing sidewalks, solving problems with permits, and trying to improve quality of life at the micro level for folks. But my best experience of this whole endeavor have been the amazing people I've met along the way. I've had the opportunity to meet former presidents and future ones, members of Congress, legislators, regulators, law enforcement. But it's our residents and the business owners who give thousands of hours of their time to make this community better. They're the ones who've left an indelible mark on me. Those who just show up and start doing the work that needs to be done. I salute those folks, who sometimes get ahead of the city and are reined back in, but are there early in the morning to late at night for no pay, just to make the city a better place for everyone. Having been an official part of HB's government for the last 13 years, I've seen a lot of changes and a lot of civic engagement. But what I try to always be aware of is how we use our power. Was it to protect those who have historically been unprotected, or was it to be spiteful? I tried to make, tried my best to make sure that we had an alert and knowledgeable citizenry. But with outside forces working for their own benefit, I failed. It wasn't for lack of trying, and it doesn't mean that I'm going to stop trying to make sure our residents are informed of what their city is doing and helping to explain how our government works, or why, the why of things. Since the election, I didn't realize how much mental load this job puts on you and the ones in your family. I've been thinking a lot about tonight, what I might say to both those that voted for me and those that didn't. I got to thinking about what others have done and said as they leave office, and so that brought me to President Eisenhower's farewell address, the one that created the term "The Military Industrial Complex." I remember reading about the fact that there was much more of that speech than just that line. So I watched it over the weekend on C-SPAN, and there's some really interesting takeaways that I wanted to share as I leave office, that the incoming council and those in the community might ruminate on them, as they take up the reins of power. Ike, who had served his country for 50 years in both peacetime and at war as Supreme Allied Commander, and then as President of these United States, suggested that we, quote, "Must avoid the impulse to live only for today." And paraphrasing, that he said, "We want HB to survive for all generations to come and not to become the insolvent phantom of tomorrow." The intense responsibility you have as a council member to represent and care for the 1,500 employees and the 200,000 residents in your stead should not be forgotten at any time. I don't want to forget to thank all of the staff who made my job easier, who trained me in land juice, who gave me the tools to be successful, and who would answer my endless questions in an attempt to hit the four corners of the box on a project or policy. And I'd like to thank Robin for her commitment to public service and her service to Huntington Beach, through the ups and the downs, and through 20 years of service. Thank you. You do this for the- You do this for them, not for yourself. You must show up prepared, but also be able to explain how and why you're voting the way you are. This will be even more important going forward, since it appears there'll be little disagreement among the new members. But to the residents of HB, I say thank you for the opportunity. And hold on, if the last two years are any example, I will not wager what the next four will bring. But I leave you with the follow, the final policy thoughts during my last few minutes on council. Y'all, we need to build more housing. Every single issue in this city can be traced back to a lack of affordable and attainable housing, homelessness, inflation, school closures, traffic, lack of customers for businesses, lack of employees for businesses, lack of growth in city revenue. All of these are tied to people not being able to afford to live here, and those that are barely able to afford to live here at $6,000 a month are living there with five buddies, and these aren't the families we want moving into our neighborhoods. This is why you never see a house not sell in HB. The Saudis and the Chinese sovereign wealth funds and Goldman Sachs and Blackstone Capital are happy to make all cash purchases of our housing stock, and with Prop 19's removal of passing down property taxes to your children, you're going to see the numbers of rent, folks renting in this city skyrocket. We are not housing our existing residents appropriately, and we're not preparing for the next generation of residents. Our job on this council is to plan for the future and to work to predict what the next generation of Huntington Beach residents may need. That currently looks like senior assisted living facilities and healthcare facilities. So why not work on making Huntington Beach Hospital a world-class facility? I know I tried.
Your five minutes.
I didn't see a timer. I've got one last page here.
It's on the agenda.
I know, I understand that.
It's on the agenda.
Can I finish my last page here for my service? Do you mind if I finish my last page here, Mayor?
No, we're going to move on.
Wild, wild.
Our councilmember Bolton.
With apologies to Mr. Kelmick. On my written notes that I have with me every meeting that I create in preparation, there are three quotes at the top of the page, and I've had these on my notes since my very first meeting on city council. And I'm going to start by reading those three quotes for the benefit of the people who think they know me, but you do not. The very first quote is very personal. It is from my faith tradition, and it is Matthew, chapter 25, verse 40, from the NIV version of the Bible, which says, "The king will reply, 'Truly I tell you: Whatever you did for the least one of these brothers and sisters of mine, you do for me.'" The second quote is from a letter Thomas Jefferson wrote to Henry King about our Constitution's First Amendment, dated September 16, 1814. Thomas Jefferson said, "Our particular principles of religion are a subject of accountability to our God alone. I inquire after no man's and trouble no man with mine; nor is it given to us in this life to know whether yours or mine, or our friends' or our foes', are exactly the right." Lastly, there's this well-known quote from a mayor of New York City from a long time ago. "There is no democratic or republican way of cleaning the streets." This man, Fiorello LaGuardia, had an airport named after him, so I guess that his constituents respected him. These are the things that I've always had on my mind as I've sat at this stage for the last three and a half years. Today, I want to tell you what an honor it has been to serve the people and the city of Huntington Beach. It's gratifying to feel that you've made a difference when dealing with matters large and small, from helping to put homeless people into housing, to getting a crosswalk installed in a place to make our streets safer. I want to tell the staff from each and every department that there are no words that adequately express my appreciation for each of you. I've seen your dedication and professionalism, and I tell everyone that I encountered that Huntington Beach has the best staff anyone could possibly want. Thank you all for helping me to be the best council member that I could possibly be. I am very grateful for this experience and for each one of our residents, whatever your political philosophy is. Moving forward, my hope for the city is that you will have leadership that acts with integrity, dignity, and respect and compassion for each resident, no matter who they are. We are facing headwinds of all types. A resident contacted me this past weekend to tell me about their rent at Emerald Cove Apartments, which is going up 10% for the second year in a row. And Emerald Cove is supposed to be affordable housing for seniors. Well, seniors, a person who's living on a fixed income doesn't have a 10% increase in their income every year, that's for sure. And so that's a really challenging situation for a person like that. I told that resident that I would mention that issue here tonight because the economics, the economy, is going to be the most challenging situation that this council and the city faces in the coming years. We'll have to navigate this issue at a time when our country is about as polarized as it can be. The city council must focus on the right things to successfully meet these challenges. I hope you do so. And I hope you do this with love in your hearts, rather than partisanship. Because for those who are genuinely, who genuinely care about helping their community, there really is no other way to do this. There really is no other way to be a public servant without going insane. You have to do it with love in your heart. Good luck to the new council, and good luck to the residents of Huntington Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Moser.
Good evening. As I sit here tonight for my final meeting as a member of this council, I am filled with gratitude, reflection, and a deep sense of responsibility for the future of our beloved city. First, I want to express my profound appreciation for all those who have made my time on this council possible. To the voters who placed their trust in me, some not just once, but twice, thank you for believing in my ability to represent and serve our community. Your voices, your concerns, and your hopes for Huntington Beach have been my guide and my motivation. To my colleagues, past and present, especially councilmembers Dan Kelmick and Rhonda Bolton, thank you for your commitment to this city, even in the face of challenges and differences. To the city staff, both those serving today and those who are no longer serving in Huntington Beach, I extend to you my deepest gratitude. Your expertise, dedication, and tireless work often go unseen, but you are the foundation upon which this city is built. I also want to thank my incredible appointees. You have carried out your responsibilities with dedication, thoughtfulness, and heart. Your work has made our city better, and it has been an honor to serve alongside all of you. And to my family, thank you for standing by me through the long nights, the challenges, and the triumphs. Your love and support have been my foundation. To my children, thank you for inspiring me to create a better world. I also want to take a moment to honor the memory of my mentors, Shirley Detloff and Ralph Bauer, both former mayors of Huntington Beach, who have passed on since I first took my seat on this council. Shirley and Ralph were the kind of leaders who embodied what it means to serve with humility, grace, and vision. I still think of them daily and hope that my service has honored the example that they set. As I move forward, I will strive to continue honoring them, not only through my work, but through the way I live my life. Huntington Beach is more than a place I serve, it's my hometown. It's the city where my journey began as a newborn adoptee, brought here home with my mom and dad just days after my birth. It's where I grew up, learned about life, and eventually am raising my own family. It has been the greatest honor to serve this community as an elected official, and I'm so proud that my parents got to see me elected and serve with dignity. Love you, Mom, and love you, Dad. My journey in public service began in 2017, when I joined the Huntington Beach Human Relations Task Force. At the time, I was searching for ways to give back and make a difference locally. I was deeply concerned, as I am now, about the state of our world and our city. When I discovered that the task force's mission was to celebrate and promote diversity in the community through education and understanding, I felt called to be a part of something that represented the very best of Huntington Beach. The task force was created in response to hate crimes and acts of violence that took place in the mid to late 90s, but our city responded by committing to heal, to unify, and to stand for the dignity of every individual. The council of that time not only formed the task force, but also adopted the Declaration of Policy about human dignity, a promise to uphold the inherent worth of all people. Little did I know that my role on the task force would lead me to city government, introducing me to incredible mentors, inspiring friendships, and countless opportunities to contribute to the greater good. Over these past years, I have worked to carry forward that spirit of resilience and hope, even in the face of adversity. I'm proud of the work that we've done together. Some of my best memories are of witnessing real change, watching people who couldn't get to the sea on their own experience that joy through the Moby Mats, seeing neighbors step up to engage in conversation at our community cafes, walking alongside individuals experiencing homelessness and offering them pathways to hope and housing through our Navigation Center, the Homeless Task Force, our social workers, to creating permanent supportive housing and to expanding our system of care and truly reducing homelessness through that system. Talking to scout troops about civic engagement, planting trees in Central Park with volunteers and students, writing letters of recommendation for youth board members and hearing that they got into the schools of their dreams, listening to our community passionately defend our libraries in the early hours of the morning, and feeling so proud of their resolve. While I am proud of our success, as I cannot overlook the challenges, aging infrastructure, housing policies that are lacking, and the growing polarization in our community weigh heavily on my heart, but I leave this role with faith in the resilience and spirit of our community. I've often thought about courage during my time on this council, the courage to stand up for what is right, even when the odds are stacked against us. A quote from To Kill a Mockingbird has repeatedly guided me. "Real courage is when you know you're licked before you begin, but you begin anyway and see it through no matter what." That courage has driven me to fight for the soul of the city, for our libraries, for public safety, for the vulnerable in our community, and for a Huntington Beach where everyone feels they belong. As I prepare to step away, I feel both hope and concern. Hope because I've seen the resilience of our residents, the grassroots organizers, the volunteers, and the neighbors who step up when no one is watching. Concerned because the challenges we face demand leadership that prioritizes the greater good over personal agendas. To those continuing in leadership, I urge you to approach this work with integrity, humility, and a sense of responsibility to all residents. Leadership is not about power, it is about service.
Councilmember Moser, five minutes.
I'll finish my last sentence. For me, this chapter may be ending, but my commitment to Huntington Beach remains unwavering. Whether in the public or private sector, I will continue to advocate for the principles that have guided me here. Collaboration, courage, and hope for a better future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Vandermark. May I, may I say a few things? I won't be five minutes, I promise. I just wanted to say, since this is my last city council meeting, I was beyond blown away and moved by all of the residents who came to the previous council meeting and presented the outgoing council and myself with those flowers. I've never seen anything like that. I've been coming to meetings for years, and you just touched my heart in a way that I can't even explain how I felt. And I often wonder, when I come home from work after a bad day or something, like, what am I doing, you know? And then it's something like that. I work, I always tell people, I work for the people. I really do what's right for them. I try really hard to make everything work the way it's supposed to for the public. And that night was just such affirmation, and I want to thank everybody who came. And I also want to thank all of you who serve. We know how hard this is. I mean, it's a lot of time, and I can't even imagine, your weekends, your weekdays and stuff. I mean, I applaud you for the amount of time you're willing to give up to serve your community. But what I really hope happens with the new council is that we find, we bring ourselves together. We're so divided, and, you know, I know we can do that. I've seen it happen in the past. We used to not know each other's political parties. We just didn't, and now it just seems like there's a line drawn between the two parties. And I know we want so much of the same thing, and so I hope going forward that that can happen. And I wish everybody the best of luck, and I congratulate all who are elected, including our incoming clerk, Lisa Lane Barnes. I have a wonderful, fantastic office that I'm leaving that I will miss dearly, and the people that work in this office are so dedicated and ethical and honest, and I know that they're going to make Lisa look really good when she comes into our office. She's going to have a great staff to rely on, and I want to thank my staff. They're here tonight. Thank you to everyone that works in the city clerk's office so much. My career has been great because of you. And thank you, Mayor Vandermark, for allowing me this time to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I have 30 seconds? Just 30 seconds.
Sure.
I just want to recognize Robin. I've worked with her now for 10 years. I've been in office 10 years. She preceded me in the clerk's office, and even though we come from different corners of the political ring, I will tell you that she's always been a professional. She's done a great job in her duties as clerk. And I know, I know publicly, there have been some exchanges publicly, but I will tell you privately, never a cross word or a disagreement. She's approached her job with the utmost professionalism and has been a great city clerk for the city of Huntington Beach. So I just wanted to recognize you for that. And that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Strickland.
So I want to extend my best wishes to the three outgoing council members. This is not an easy job, and I want to wish you nothing but the best. I know you always fought for what you believe in. I have a saying that I know the mayor is sick of me saying, and my wife is definitely sick of me saying, but I always say, "Agree to disagree without being disagreeable." And I've always believed, look, I think divided is, yeah, we have different ideas, we're all raised differently, we have different ways of solving problems. That's why elections don't matter. You know, who gets in, who can say, you know, where they believe, and our democracy works. But, you know, we're divided because we have different ideas on how to help people. I've never, ever thought that you guys weren't fighting for our city, and I just want to thank you for your service to our city, and I wish you nothing but the best. You know, we can always say, hey, you don't agree, but I joke around, I don't agree with my wife 100% of the time, so there's no way that you can have someone that agrees with you 100% of the time. And I will just say, I learned from my father, who was a crew military soldier, that it's up to every generation to leave the next generation better off than what you found. That's why we do what we do, because we're trying to make the next generation have more opportunity than what you had. And that's why we put in long hours, because we want a better future for Huntington Beach. And I have to say, I'm looking forward to serving with the HB Three, the new Three coming in. You're like family to me already. I know you're going to do a remarkable job, Chad, Butch, and Don. I'm looking forward to serving with you. The four that we campaigned together, we're like family, and I know that we always will fight for what we believe is right for Huntington Beach. And I will say this, I'll just end with this. I'll never apologize for fighting for this city, the city that we all love. I believe the decisions for this city should be made in this body here, and not a bureaucracy in Sacramento or a governor who wants to turn this into San Francisco. And I believe as long as we're here, we're going to fight for the values of Surf City, USA. And with that, again, I extend my best wishes for the outgoing council colleagues, and I'm looking forward to serving the next three colleagues in the next couple of years, and we're going to fight to make Huntington Beach great again.
Mayor Pro Tem Pat Burns.
I'll speak a little bit later, so I'm just going to just say thank you, everybody here. It doesn't happen without the volunteers and everybody voting and everything like that. I greatly... I greatly appreciate, I love this city, I care for its future, and you guys are a big part of it. Other than that, December 14th, John Baca, Medal of Honor recipient, will be raising a flag in Baca Park over there at Gothard and Ellis at 10:00 AM. I'd love anybody who can to participate. And as Ryan said Thursday in front of HSS, the Hall of Fame, we're going to be inducting Sugars, the surf dog. Amazing. Five world championships, five-time Parina. So it's a big event, awesome deal. So that'll be 9:00 AM in front of HSS this Thursday. So thank you guys for everything you guys do and will do with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the city clerk's report. City clerk, please proceed with your report.
Okay, so we're going to put some slides up on the screen. Yeah, that one's, it's the other one. So tonight, as I mentioned earlier, when supplemental communication was announced, that we did get the certificate that we've been waiting for. It's Exhibit A to our Resolution 2024-59. And we knew the results, the vote count earlier in the day. The registrar published a press release that said the numbers on the web were good. So I went ahead and put them into this PowerPoint, so we can go to the next slide. Our November 5th, 2024 election results for city council. Candidates elected to serve. Chad Williams, 52,335 votes. Butch Twining, 43,924 votes. And Don Kennedy, 43,319 votes. For our election for city clerk, our candidate Lisa Lane Barnes was elected with 52,956 votes. Last but not least, our city treasurer, Lisa Backstrom, was reelected with 74,634 votes. Our charter amendment, Measure U, also known as the Environmental Protection Measure, it passed with a favorable vote count of 56,306. And there were 41,295 voted against that measure. But it will move forward, and the clerk's office will be in touch with the Secretary of State's office to get our charter updated. So what you need to do tonight, and I'm requesting your assistance, to adopt Resolution 2024-59, a resolution of the city council of the city of Huntington Beach, California, reciting the facts of the general municipal election held on Tuesday, November 5th, 2024, declaring the results and such other matters as provided by law, including Exhibit A, which is in my email, it'll be part of the record tomorrow, Certificate of Registrar of Voters to Results of the Canvas of the General Election Returns.
I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2024-59-59.
All right, let's take a vote. Councilmember Moser?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Kelmick?
Aye.
The item passes 7-0.
Thank you. Will Chad Williams... At this time, we're moving to administer the Oaths of Office. Will Chad Williams, along with his family and friends, please come down for his oath of office?
Janet Nguyen, our senator is going to provide the oath.
Yes, Senator Janet Nguyen will be administering the oath. That's what he said. God wanted us all up there.
Repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Chad Williams.
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I will support...
That I will support...
And defend this Constitution of the United States...
And defend this Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic...
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith...
And allegiance...
And allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely...
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation...
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion...
And that I will well and faithfully...
And that I will well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, councilman.
Next, will Butch Twining, along with his family and friends, please come down for his oath of office? The oath will also be administered by Senator Janet Nguyen.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Butch Twining.
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic...
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith...
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States... And allegiance...
With the Constitution of the United States...
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States...
And the allegiance to the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely...
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation...
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion...
That I will well and faithfully...
That I will well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, councilman.
Next, will Don Kennedy, along with his family and friends, please come down for your oath of office?
Right hand up. I'm not blocking you, right? You can come closer to him. He doesn't bite, I promise. Come closer, it better picture.
Repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Don Kennedy.
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I will support...
That I will support...
And defend...
And defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic...
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith...
And allegiance...
And allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely...
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation...
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion...
And that I will well...
And that I will well...
And faithfully...
And faithfully...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, councilman.
At this moment, I'd like to call down Alyssa Backstrom, along with her family and friends, for her oath of office. Lisa? Okay. I'd like to call Lisa Lane with her friends and family for her oath of office.
Here we go, Pastor Joe. You want your mom next to you? All right, okay, all right. Okay, raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Lisa Lane Barnes.
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I'll support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic.
That I'll bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution...
And allegiance to the Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely...
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will and well.
And that I will and well.
Faithfully discharge the duties I'm about to enter.
Faithfully discharge the duties I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Okay, and now will Alyssa Backstrom along with her family and friends please come down for her oath of office which will be administered by Robin Estenislau. Yes, take your seats.
I'll be photobombing. Congratulations.
Okay, Alyssa, you ready? I state your name.
I, Alyssa Backstrom.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Alyssa.
Okay, Joe. Thank you. City Clerk, may I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Twining. Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem, Pat Burns.
Here.
Mayor, Gracie Vandermark.
Here.
Councilmember Strickland.
Here.
Councilmember McKean.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Mayor Vandermark. Mayor Vandermark, may I have a motion and a second to elect a new mayor?
I would like to make a motion to nominate Mayor Pro Tem Pat Burns as our next mayor.
I would like to second the motion to Pat Burns, the next mayor of Huntington Beach.
We call, call the vote. Councilmember Twining.
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy.
With joy and pride, I cast my vote as a yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns.
Aye.
Mayor Vandermark.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Strickland.
Aye.
Councilmember McKean.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Motion passes 7-0.
Family, oh, sorry, family and friends, please come down. Pat Burns. Do they want to come down? Pat Burns, family and friends, please come on down. Yes, go on the step. Vertically challenged people over here with me. Right now I am. Until I read this, I am. Yeah, one more. Are you gonna say Patrick? No, you're not. He's gonna say Patrick.
I will.
Are you ready? Is everybody here? Okay. Please repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Patrick Burns.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution.
And bear allegiance to the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I, that I will take this obligation freely.
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon, I'm about to enter.
Congratu, congratulations, Mayor. Picture. Congratulations, First Lady.
Well done.
Wait, which one's mine? No, but I have to, we have to. Oh. Pat, don't go anywhere. Pat Burns. Pat. Who called me? It is now my honor to present you, Mayor Pat Burns, with your very own gavel, the real one this time. Congratulations.
Now, I got some for Gracie. I got a couple things for you. Thanks, Abby. We got these nice gifts for the outgoing mayor. I am very honored to follow her. She, uh, I never had any doubt in her after our first year. Before we were, uh, took office in '22, believe me, I questioned it for about 40 minutes while she yelled at me. And, uh, but it was, I had no problem. I had full faith in that she was gonna do a great job, and she didn't let me down one bit. I'm totally proud of you.
That's Pat's job. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, the new.
Yes. Picture mics down. Push this down. The mic.
All right, now, can I have a motion to, and a second to elect the Mayor Pro Tem? And I'll nominate Casey McKean.
Madam Clerk, I'm honored to second the motion Casey McKean is the next Pro Tem of the City of Huntington Beach.
Councilmember McKean, will you and your family please join, Councilmember?
We still have to vote.
That's right.
I was waiting for them to stop clapping.
I'm reading the script.
Councilmember. Councilmember Twining.
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy.
With absolute certainty, yes.
Councilmember Vandermark.
100%.
Mayor Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland.
Aye.
Councilmember McKean.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vote passes 7-0.
Councilmember McKean's family, please step up to the stage.
Did you want to do the steps? Do you want to do it up here or did you want to do it down here?
I'll do it down here, there's a guy behind me.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Is that better? Okay. Please repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Casey McKean.
I, Casey McKean.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem Casey McKean. Oh, yes. Oh, I can hold this for you. They're gonna do it now? Mayor Pro Tem, where's Mayor Pro Tem? This is Casey. This is Burns.
That's my purse. After, after comments and stuff, then we'll take another picture. Yeah, I know. Right after comments. Comments. Yeah, but we'll do comments first. Yeah. All right. You want picture now? All right. Photo. Let me take off my glasses. We will all have the opportunity now to, the newly elected, electeds, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, to provide comments. Lisi, you wanna start? You got any comments?
Sure. What an amazing day in Huntington Beach. I am so grateful to all of the citizens of Huntington Beach who came alongside and truly just fought for what we believed. And I'm grateful to the council members that also partnered with us, the three incumbents, that we, we really worked hard together. I'm grateful for my family that sits behind me. And, and I would say to the citizens of Huntington Beach, we're gonna need a lot of your encouragement, a lot of your continued support to, to take the city to the places that you want it to go. And we look forward to your participation. I look forward to hearing from the citizens, and I'm just very grateful, and thank you to, to everyone.
City Attorney Michael Gates.
Hey, yeah, thank you. Just a few words. I've actually waited four years for this day. So, bear with me for a couple minutes. I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate Dawn, Chad, and Butch on their election to City Council. As well as Lisa Lane for her election to City Clerk. I know this was a result of a long campaign, similar to the strong campaign and success of the Fab Four in the 2022 election. The fact that Dawn, Chad, and Butch delivered a clean sweep of all incumbents is remarkable and speaks volumes of what is happening in this city. History tells us that incumbents in Huntington Beach usually get reelected, no matter what their political persuasion or affiliation. Unseating incumbents is highly improbable. But in this election, all incumbents lost, and Dawn, Chad, and Butch won their seats. There, there are lessons to be learned about city leadership by these recent election results. The City of Huntington Beach is a large city with high propensity voters. We are 23rd, we are the 23rd largest city of 482 cities in the State of California. We are larger than half of the 58 counties in the state. We are big, and we are a big deal. I'm, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go off script real quick and, and respond to the speaker who said that we did not win our voter ID case. I heard from the attorney, the state attorney today, who asked that we agree to allow judgment to be entered by the court against the state as quickly as possible so they could go and appeal. So, I, I'm still trying to think about strategically whether that's good for the city or not. I may disagree with that approach. But if we didn't win, they wouldn't be asking, begging for a judgment against them. So, anyway. Anyway. I, I'll get back on script. Our voter turnout this election cycle was 80%. 80% of registered voters in Huntington Beach voted this election cycle, even with the passage of the city's new voter ID law. This is evidence that the existence of voter ID requirements, although not fully implemented in the city yet, does not discourage voting. In any event, the point is, the residents in Huntington Beach are educated, they're knowledgeable, they're engaged, they're paying attention, and they vote. And they are making a difference by their vote. So, what do the 2022 and '24 elections tell us about our city leadership? The citizens of Huntington Beach spoke loudly, clearly, and decisively that they wanted a dramatic change from what was occurring with the 2020 City Council led by Calmick, Mosier, Bolton, and Kim Carr. I know, I'll deal with this in a second here. Just give me a, give me, I'm, I'm just warming up here. These two elections appear to be a referendum, a repudiation on the prior 2020 City Council leadership. Here are just a few notable lessons that we, as the city leaders now, can learn from. Voters rejected radical actions by the 2020 City Council, such as then newly sworn Dan Calmick, Natalie Mosier, and Kim Carr, literally on day one, literally on day one that they were sworn in, called for an investigation of the elected city attorney. That investigation was politically motivated. It was conducted behind closed doors, away from public view. And the cost to you, ladies and gentlemen, was $85,000 to pay Dan Calmick's attorney friend, Craig Steele, only to have the final report a year later exonerate me, as city attorney, for the work that we did in our office. The lesson is that voters disapprove of city leadership, weaponizing city resources, and engage in highly political charge witch hunts. Any political activity like this should not be done on taxpayer dime. By the election results, it is also clear that voters have rejected the political games played by 2020 council members, including Dan Calmick, Natalie Mosier, Rhonda Bolton, and Kim Carr, with the city's lawsuits, including criticizing the Pacific Air Show settlement, while at the very same time, they paid their friends, including former city employee Scott Field, $2.5 million to settle a frivolous lawsuit against the city attorney. Calmick, Mosier, Bolton, and Carr literally paid $2.5 million to plaintiffs, even though the allegations were never proven, and no damages by the plaintiffs were ever presented in the case. Was that a gift of public fund, funds authorized by Dan, Natalie, Rhonda, and Kim in the amount of $2.5 million to their friend, Mr. Field? The lesson here, I believe, is that voters, by the election results, rejected the politicizing of lawsuits by council members. Another quick example, voters have rejected massive secret deals by the 2020 City Council, which included, in a couple of cases, burdening you, the taxpayer, with $321 million in bonds to purchase high-density housing developments, the Breakwater and Elan Apartments. At the time, Dan, Natalie, Rhonda, and Kim Carr on the City Council called for special meetings. Special meetings, not done doing city business during regular meetings when the public would expect them, but special meetings, like on a Thursday, you know, a time that the public would not expect the council to meet. And they held these special meetings so the public would not see what they were doing that would burden the citizens for decades with hundreds of millions of dollars in financial obligations. And to make matters worse, Dan, Natalie, Rhonda, and Kim gave away $173 million in tax revenue that was to come to the city, but instead gave it to other agencies. It's now no longer coming to us, the taxpayer, $173 million that we would have otherwise gotten, but for their vote, a vote that occurred in special meetings, outside the view of residents. The lesson here is that voters demand that city business be conducted entirely in view of the public and not conducted in secret during special council meetings when the public is not fully apprised of the scope of the proposals and not fully aware of the massive financial burdens that would be borne by them. By these election results, it is clear that voters have rejected council members such as Dan Calmick, Natalie Mosier, Rhonda Bolton, from storming out of council meetings in the middle of conducting city business, simply because they objected to city council proposals, including measures to support the First Amendment, Second Amendment, and other constitutional principles. Voters clearly reject bad, unprofessional behavior. In addition, by these election results, it is clear that voters rejected council leadership, again, such as Dan, Natalie, Rhonda, and Kim, proudly proclaiming their allegiance to state policies and advancing those state policies here at the dais at the city level. These 2020 City Council members made it known that they preferred the policies coming out of Sacramento over the policies that would best serve the citizens of Huntington Beach. The lesson here is that Huntington Beach voters demand that our city leadership put Huntington Beach first, regardless of the policies and demands of the state. And voters have rejected council leadership, such as Dan, Natalie, Rhonda, and Kim, again, engaging in uncivil and offensive conduct towards their elected colleagues. These very council members, these very council members have called our other elected officials corrupt, Nazis, and liars, both at the dais here during meetings when cameras were rolling and the public was watching, and also to the media, so that they would appear in articles. The lesson here is that voters disapprove of elected council members abusing their office by attacking other elected officials. Electeds are not simply individuals here. We have, each one of us represents tens of thousands of members of the community. Each one of us represents tens of thousands of members of the community. So disgraceful character attacks on other elected officials is viewed by the voters as attacks on them. Don't preach civility and decorum only to turn around and publicly character assassinate your colleagues. A complete cleaning of the city's house by the 2022 and 2024 elections is a drastic change and a new direction demanded by the voters. Our elections to public office as city officials is a privilege. It's an honor and a unique opportunity to lead, but also to listen to the community and provide the kind of leadership the community has put us here for. And Mayor Burns is looking at me.
I know you love a mic, but we have a party.
The other five pages, the other five pages are still in the printer. So that, so. So, my assistant's bringing the other five pages down. I'm totally kidding. But, but congratulations. We have brand-new leadership. We have great leadership. And Huntington Beach is a beacon of light, not only for the citizens in Huntington Beach, but for the rest of the state. And I have heard from around, from other cities, that we are literally the land of the free and home of the brave here in Huntington Beach in California. So, congratulations.
All right. Now, we'll go to council members, and I'll remind you, five minutes. Please. Dawn.
Thanks, Mayor. Sorry, Butch. In all seriousness, I am humbled to sit before you. Chad Williams and Butch Twining and myself, along with the help of these seated members and our city attorney Gates, and every one of these volunteers that are here tonight and those that are watching on TV. They poured, and we poured our heart and soul into this for one reason. We love Huntington Beach. I can say this with confidence that Huntington Beach's best days are ahead of us, and we are gonna be part of bringing solutions to this city that benefit everyone. I arrived in Huntington Beach in 1962, and I love this city. So, I wanna start with my gratitude right from the top. You know, I do put my faith in Jesus Christ. He, He is my Savior. I put my hand on a Bible today that was given to me when I was 16 by my mom, who flew in from Florida, and my dad, who resides in heaven. And I was honored to actually put my hand on that Bible. Along the way, we had so much prayer for us from various leaders, like Pastor Joe and Pastor Kent Sparks and Pastor Jack Hibbs. And what that taught me, and I didn't need to be taught it because I knew it, there is power in prayer, and there's strength in numbers. And all three of those pastors taught me one thing that I'll never forget. They said, "Dawn, pray for favor." And I, I had never prayed for favor, and favor for your campaign, favor in your life. And, and I'm now gonna use that word because it sounded selfish at first, but I'm gonna pray for favor for the City of Huntington Beach. With all that said, my dear wife sat with me in 2018. It was her and I, it was a solo mission, and she poured her heart and soul into my election efforts in 2018. 2020 and 2022, I stood down. It was, when these, these members said, "Dawn, we wanna support you. Do you still love Huntington Beach? Are you willing to put the work in?" The answer was a simple and easy, yes, 100%. I love this city. I will do everything possible to create the best Huntington Beach. I love this city with all my heart and soul, and, uh... Butch! I am gonna keep it short. We had a lot of fun on the campaign tour. I, I, I can tell you, I had a ton of fun with Butch, ton of fun with Chad. Hard work paid off, but we had a lot of fun putting in the work. So, let me just wrap it up by saying thank you to the volunteers who poured every ounce of their heart and soul into our efforts. It goes without saying, I cannot tell you how grateful I am and we are for the efforts you put in for us. It's, it's unbelievable. My family, my parents, I, I love you guys with all my heart and soul. My running mates, as Chad taught me to say, we are forged by adversity. We had, we were three brothers out there. It was not always a lot of fun, but it was certainly rewarding. And I love that man, Chad Williams. I love this man right here, my running mates. I'll be so, so thankful to be part of the HB3. And let me close by saying this. Nobody really, the city didn't do enough to celebrate our first Latina mayor. You know, I came here when she was elected. She is an incredible woman. Tony, you set the bar high. She reached it, she might have set a little bit higher. You're really gonna have to be on your A-game because she did an incredible job. So, I am so fortunate to sit with my running mates here, sit with this, this leadership, and I look forward to the best days in Huntington Beach. And now we know why your name is Mike. Thank you.
All right. Now, this is gonna be really testing in a time of five minutes. This guy can talk more than anybody I've known. Butch Twining, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Those of you that know me know that that's not right. I, I'm not, I'm a man of very few words. But sometimes I have a lot to say. First off, I wanna say, everything Dawn said, I 100% agree, so I'll try not to rehash that. I too am a, a man of the Bible, the man of God. My family is too. I too want to thank Pastor Kent and Pastor Joe for all the prayers they showered on us. I think many of you know that on November 5th, I was feeling real uncomfortable in the morning. I'm going, I gotta do something more. And so, I asked Chad to reach out to Pastor Joe and see if he'd, he would pray over us. And so, we went over to the church, the three of us, and rather than have a, just a prayer where, you know, he'd put his hands over us like, you know, he did sometimes, we went out to the boathouse, and it was the longest prayer there ever was. But here we are, right up here. It worked. So, thank you. Thank you to my, my fantastic family, for my wife, my beautiful wife Dana, for supporting me these last 15 months. It was not easy. We worked very, very hard. Sometimes Michael Gates was, you know, had the, had the whip in his hand, and he, he was whipping us, and you guys aren't working hard enough. Well, I can tell you, I can tell you that between all of us, the three of us, we knocked on probably 15,000 doors. We walked hundreds of miles, and we had about 129 events at people's homes. Now, we could not even be here. I used to say in my speeches at people's homes and wherever I was speaking, that we could not win this because we were running against three incumbents. The only way we were gonna win this was by each of you joining our campaign. The only way we were going to win this was by each of you joining our campaign and telling your neighbors, and you did it, and that's why we're up here. Our wonderful volunteers, our wonderful support group, thank you all very much. I'm only half-done. You can see, you can see Gracie over there, she keeps, she keeps me on a stopwatch, so I think I'm the only one that she does that too. I think going forward, what, what I want to do as a city councilman is try to, you know, not only bring everybody together, you know, there definitely has been some fractures and, and arguments between different factions. I'd like to see us come together a little bit more. We are a conservative town, I am a conservative all the way, and I will fight for conservative principles in Huntington Beach as long as I'm up here. I will fight Sacramento mandates right along with the rest of us. I will be by Michael's side as we, as we fight for voter ID, as we fight against the uncontrolled, low-income, high-density development that Sacramento wants us to do. And I think that's, I think that's what the citizens of Huntington Beach want for us to do too, is fight Sacramento, fight for what's right, and fight for conservative values in Huntington Beach. So if that's what you want, I'm the right guy up here, and I look forward to serving all of you for the next four years. Thank you for electing me.
I feel I can do a speech, but go ahead, Chad.
I just want to say that I really am so just deeply honored, humbled, and blessed to be sitting here before you all today. Huntington Beach is the city that I was born and raised in. I really see myself as a product of Huntington Beach, the patriotism that really came out in the days of 9/11. I was a junior in high school, and that inspired me to go and serve overseas as a Navy SEAL. And whenever I was representing, you know, America overseas, I felt as though I'm really representing more than just America, I'm representing the greatest city in America, Huntington Beach. It's the city I fought for. And it's the city I fought to get back home to. And now I'm raising my beautiful children here in this town. First and foremost, in terms of thankfulness, you have to acknowledge God Almighty and the name above all names, Jesus. None of this would be possible without him. Thanks to God and his guidance and his providence, we wouldn't be here without him. And I also would like to extend my gratitude to my incredible wife and children, their unwavering support all along the way. You know, it's been said that he who has a why can endure any how, and you genuinely have been my why that has led to the how in terms of getting here. I also want to extend my gratitude to my teammates, the HB3. It's been said that iron sharpens iron, so shall one man sharpen another. And so together out there on the campaign trail, we let the sparks fly and we honed the craft together. Certainly thanks to the Fab Four and Michael Gates, you have demonstrated what servant leadership looks like, as you have invested into us and led the way. And a huge thanks to the volunteers, you, you poured out your hearts and you poured into our buckets and you got us across the finish line. We genuinely could not have done this without you. And I also want to extend... I'd also like to extend gratitude to the opposition that sometimes meant harm for myself and my family. I can genuinely look back and say that what they meant for evil, God meant for good. It was an opportunity for us to be refined as a family, it was an opportunity for us to really dig deep and, and just deepen to that resolve. And as it says in the scriptures, what they meant for evil, God meant for good. And I think that the future of Huntington Beach looks extremely good, especially considering all the electives that we have. With our treasurer, to our city clerk, to the city council, to the city attorney, we are all united in the same bond of love. It is a love, a love for God, a love for our community, and our priorities are clear. We want to put Huntington Beach and its citizens first. We want to balance that budget and grow revenue responsibly, reduce homelessness, and hold the line on local autonomy, which is our right as a charter city in the state of California. We really are up against some unconstitutional mandates, but I think for the first time we could say collectively, we stand together as a treasurer, clerk, and council to stand behind our city attorney. We all will be opening up our city gates to unleash Michael Gates to fight those unconstitutional mandates. We are a charter city, and that genuinely means something. That's more than just a receipt that you put away in a drawer. It means that we have local autonomy. It comes from the highest authority in our state. It's Article 11, Section 5B, the California Constitution. It's what we all took an oath to uphold and defend against all enemies, foreign and domestic. The people of Huntington Beach have put us in the arena, and now it's our responsibility to ensure that Huntington Beach remains more than just a city. We are a beacon of strength. We are a beacon of freedom. We are a beacon of American exceptionalism and patriotism. And we have such great opportunity to really lead the way and be a light in the darkness. And so we will work together to make Huntington Beach even greater, even brighter, and may God bless America, and may God bless our beloved Huntington Beach.
Tony?
I don't know how I'm going to follow that, but you know, let's give another round of applause for the HB3, they're amazing. I just got to say, I'm fired up. I'm fired up that I'm going to serve with this, this council, the Magnificent Seven. And I, I just want to say, it's been said here, look, we're on this dais, and we've been blessed to be on this dais. We're all God-loving individuals here. We're lucky and privileged to live in the best city in California, Huntington Beach, California. And I also want to echo, this is a team, and we, none of us would be here without so many friendly faces that are all part of our team. When I first got involved, Ronald Reagan was an inspiration to me, and I remember walking door-to-door for a candidate I really believed in, and he went up to Sacramento and did some great things. I used to get goosebumps because I knew I had a little part to play in making a difference. And I'm just here to say, each and every one of you have made a difference for the future of Huntington Beach, because I will tell you, I'm so honored to be part of this team. I've been playing team sports my whole life, and I'm proud to be part of this team. This is a great team, and we're going to fight for Huntington Beach, and we're going to fight for you. And thank you, and God bless Huntington Beach.
Ms. Gracie.
Councilmember Gracie. I just want to thank all of you guys again for supporting us, allowing us to serve you, voting us in in 2022, and voting our new fellow council members as reinforcement that we've needed desperately on this dais. Our council's secure for at least a decade, and we're going to do the very best that we can to make you guys proud. If there's something that all seven of us on this dais have, is the fight inside of us. We are here to fight for our city. We are here to fight against the state, we're here to fight, exactly as Chad said, all enemies, foreign and domestic. And all, all three of these guys vowed to do that as well, and I'm very proud to sit here and serve with them. It was a very long campaign, once again, blood, sweat, and tears. And you guys put us here. Thank you so much for allowing us to make a difference and being the tip of the spear and an example for other cities who are now following suit. Thank you.
Casey.
Just want to congratulate my, my new colleagues on council, Butch Twining, Don Kennedy, and Chad Williams. It's, as you guys know now, it's a lot of work to get here, but it's the most rewarding thing you'll ever do in your life. It changed my life for the positive. And I want to congratulate Lisa Lane Barnes on city clerk as well, and Elisa, our treasurer. And I want to thank my colleagues for giving me the honor of electing me as mayor pro tem. Serving my city has been the honor of my lifetime. Never would I have thought that, as a kid growing up in Huntington Beach, the city that I love, that my grandfather moved our family to after serving in the Korean War, me as a kid at Harborview elementary that one day I'd be a city council member, and then now a mayor pro tem. I do not take that honor lightly. I will commit, as always, that Pat and I will really get to work hard, but knowing him, we're going to have a lot of fun as well. And get ready, because next year, in 2026, is the semi-quincentennial, which is America's 250th birthday. So we're going to be planning for that. Yeah, everyone knows how patriotic Huntington Beach is, and we're going to make it even more so. And we're all up here going to get to work on unleashing the spirit animals of our local economy, getting our finances tight, and I feel that we're about to enter a golden age of prosperity nationally, and our focus is to bring that locally to our city as well, to make our city fun, prosperous, and increase our quality of life for all our residents. So God bless you all, and thank you so much. Real quick, hold on, sorry. And then lastly, I really want to thank my family for all the support. My mom Pam, my mom Deanna, my dad Calvin, my brother Sean, brother Tim and Max, and of course, my beautiful wife Josephine, who just gave birth to our second son Brady. Who, Tony, is also going to be the fourth-generation Huntington Beach resident. So anyway, thank you, love you babe, and we'll see you soon. Thank you, guys.
All right, I think most everything's been said, but I think we're going to do exactly what we planned on this whole time, is to put Huntington Beach first in our agenda. We're going to serve the best we can, and we're going to do what's right. And I always say that it's easy to do the right thing, and I don't think we're going to break a sweat doing it, because we love this city, we put it first, and we're going to do exactly what we need to, to put it on great financial grounds, and take us in a direction that serves everybody, both in the short term, long term. And I'm proud of what we've done here, and I'm going to be, hopefully be proud of what we do in the future. So couldn't do it without you guys, like I said before. Man, I, you guys have no idea, we can't do anything without you. I mean, you guys given us ideas what to do, and you sure carried us through the finish line, two elections in a row, and I greatly appreciate it, as the rest of us do too. So with that, we're going to pause for a second, we've got a picture to take in front of the dais, and then we're going to come back and shortly thereafter adjourn.